If you would like to testify, you must complete a slip in the back of the room with the sergeant at arms. Just a reminder, no one may approach Diaz at any point during this hearing. Please silence all electronic devices. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good morning, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here with you today. I'm Councilmember Ozold Feliz, Chair of the Committee on Small Business. Thank you all for joining today's hearing, and thank you to my council colleagues, representatives from the administration, and the public for being here today. Today, we'll hear from the Department of Small Business Services, SBS, about how they understand storefront vacancy rates and trends in the city, including not only how they assess vacancies, but also what those vacancies mean for cities, small businesses, and how vacancies can be kept at healthy levels for commercial districts across the city that have varying needs. I would also like to acknowledge colleagues that have joined us, including Councilmember Zhuang. Local shopping areas are the heart of many New York City neighborhoods. They are where locals go to conduct the business of everyday life, and one of the first things visitors see when they arrive to the city. Many thriving businesses on a well-lit street can impart a sense of community and strong neighborhoods. The opposite can also be true. A high number of going out of business or for rent signs might create a sense of unease or discourage new businesses from opening up and investing there. While some vacancies are inevitable in some ways, as new businesses come in and old ones leave, we know that vacancy rates that are high and vacancy rates that are lengthy indicate that something is off balance. We also know that vacancy rates in the city of New York have been trending steadily upwards for at least the last fifteen years. Only four percent of storefronts were vacant citywide in 2007. That number rose ten years later to almost six percent in 2017, and in 2019, it rose further to almost eight percent, according to the data from the Department of Finance. The pandemic raised that rate again to over ten percent in 2020. Today, SBS reports that citywide vacancies sit at an overall eleven point two percent. That is barely below the peak of eleven point three at the height of the pandemic. There's nobody that hates vacant storefronts more than I do. Vacant storefronts create many challenges for our communities. Studies show that one vacant storefront can drastically decrease the amount of foot traffic in a commercial corridor, affecting the surrounding community and business corridor. At the same time, vacant storefronts can create quality of life issues. We've seen that in many areas in our city. They turn into garbage dumping zones, they turn into graffiti zones, things that we obviously don't want in our commercial corridors. Just as important as this big picture trend is what's happening in specific neighborhoods and retail corridors across the city. The highest reported vacancy rates are consistently in Manhattan, with Manhattan Community District One reporting a high sky, a sky-high vacancy rate of twenty-two percent. In fact, every single community district in Manhattan, save one, has a double-digit vacancy rate. Brooklyn Districts also face high vacancy rates of twelve percent on average, while the Bronx and Queens are tied for lowest at eight percent. There could be many reasons for these differences. Is the rent just too high in some areas for businesses to succeed? Is this a result of larger shifts in foot traffic and shopping patterns? Or do certain neighborhoods just need more investment from the city? Could some areas benefit from forming a bid or organizing into a merchants' association? Other areas with lower vacancy rates may be underutilized and ready for more storefronts to open. Only the Small Business Committee, who see what's happening in their day-to-day work, can tell us the story behind this data. To give us that perspective, today we'll hear from SBS to understand more about what these numbers can tell us, about what is happening, what is behind the long-term rise in storefront vacancies, and also to explain what tools and support are available and effective for retail corridors experiencing high vacancy rates. I equally look forward to hearing from members of the small business community about the causes and impact of storefront vacancies in their neighborhoods, and welcome their input on additional areas where the city may offer support. Finally, before we begin, I want to thank Rebecca Barilla and Jessica Boulay from Central Staff for the work in putting this hearing together, as well as my Chief of Staff, Theona Reed, and my Deputy Chief of Staff and Legislative Director, Guillermo Rodriguez, for all the help in putting this together. Thank you so much, and now we'll pass it on to... Yep, I'll pass it on to the council to administer the oath.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everyone. I'm Jessica Boulay, Council to the Committee on Small Business. We call on the representatives of the administration to testify right now. We will hear from the Department of Small Business Services, and I will administer the affirmation to our panelists today. I believe we have with us Tiaan Weinberg, Chief of Staff, and Calvin Brown, Deputy Commissioner for Neighborhood Development. Panelists, please raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions?
I do.
I do.
Thank you very much. Chief of Staff, Tiaan Weinberg, I invite you to present.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Chair Feliz, Councilmembers Zhuang and members of the Committee on Small Business. My name is Tiaan Weinberg, and I am the Chief of Staff of the Department of Small Business Services, or SBS. I am joined today by our DPD Commissioner for Neighborhood Development, Calvin Brown. We are pleased to be here today to discuss how SBS improves neighborhood conditions for businesses and local communities. SBS's mission is to unlock NYC's economic potential and create economic security for all New Yorkers by connecting them to good jobs, creating stronger businesses, and building thriving, vibrant neighborhoods. We do this through a wide variety of services, from online education at our NYC Business Solutions Centers to pro bono legal assistance for businesses signing or renewing a commercial lease, to convening small business thought leaders from across the nation to explore creative approaches to commercial revitalization. In the previous year, we made history by launching the NYC Small Business Opportunity Fund and distributing eighty-five million dollars in low-interest loans to over one thousand small businesses, with a significant eighty percent of the loans benefiting minority or women-owned businesses. Across all our SBS divisions, our teams work every day to make New York City the most desirable place to start, operate, and grow a small business. And under this administration, we have made serious inroads and hit major milestones in our commercial recovery. As Mayor Adams often says, "Public safety is a prerequisite to prosperity." Today, our streets are safer, our sidewalks are cleaner, and we have more jobs than at any time in our city's history. One in six businesses in NYC today opened their doors under the Adams administration, according to the NYC Economic Development Corporation. These businesses are driving job creation, tourism, and subway ridership as well. Since 2022, small businesses with fewer than fifty employees have accounted for forty-five percent of New York City's overall employment growth, despite only representing about a quarter of the city's overall workforce. These businesses have also contributed more than three point two billion dollars in direct economic output to the city. Meanwhile, sixty-two million visitors brought in more than seventy-four billion in economic activity last year, and NYC hit a new post-COVID high of four million subway riders in one day. SBS is proud of the part that we have played in supporting this incredible recovery. Since last November, SBS launched our Live NYC map, which is a real-time database of more than one hundred fifty thousand storefronts and public spaces across the city's landscape, and it's the engine behind our Shop Your City website, where New Yorkers can discover and support their local small businesses. This database is refreshed every ninety days, and it informs SBS outreach and program design and enables the agency to meet our reporting obligations per Local Law 152 of 2019. According to our databases, citywide vacancy rates are declining, particularly in outer boroughs, reflecting the success of the mayor's blueprint for economic recovery. Vacancies are being filled by a variety of industries, including e-commerce-resistant businesses such as juice bars, sports stores, and coffee shops. Grocery stores are up eleven percent, and our nightlife industry is up an impressive seventeen percent. These insights inform our work with community-based organizations and allow us to be more intentional about the services we provide. Our Neighborhood Development Division, NDD, oversees NYC's network of seventy-five Business Improvement Districts, or BIDs. They themselves serve nearly three hundred miles of commercial corridors and invest more than a hundred and eighty-seven million dollars into local economies. During the Adams administration, we have allocated approximately twenty-seven million dollars in grants to over a hundred community-based organizations and bids, spurring commercial revitalization efforts across the city. Our Avenue NYC grant enables community-based development organizations to hire dedicated, full-time program managers and complete Commercial District Needs Assessments, or CDNAs. Our Neighborhood 360 grant provides organizations with the means to turn those CDNAs into impactful commercial revitalization interventions. Neighborhood organizations are using these grant programs in several creative and innovative ways. For example, in Brownsville, the Pitkin Avenue Bid, a Neighborhood 360 grantee, transformed a vacant storefront into a two-week-long Halloween destination called the Haunted Villy. The event exceeded expectations, transforming local perceptions by offering a fun and safe activity in an area that lacks many family-oriented community spaces. Haunted Villy closed on Halloween Day with a free event welcoming more than three hundred children and their families. Since this event, six new businesses have opened along the corridor. The Brooklyn Chinese-American Association used their Neighborhood 360 support to connect local entrepreneurs to property owners with available commercial space using relationships they developed while working on their CDNA, leading to three new businesses opening in Sunset Park. Coupled with a beautification blitz by the Central Astoria LDC to remove graffiti and clean up litter, Neighborhood 360 grantee Queens Economic Development Corporation will soon convene local property owners, real estate brokers, and prospective business owners for a guided walking tour of Astoria Boulevard. Our grantee aims to fill approximately twenty vacant storefronts through these strategies. This year, we also continued our historic investments in the city's bid network, with over five hundred thousand in bid exploration and formation in ten neighborhoods, and over two point five million to thirty-nine existing smaller bids to enhance their programming and service delivery. Knowing that not every commercial corridor has the capacity to begin bid formation, SBS and the mayor's Office of Equity launched our first-ever merchant organizing grants, awarding over two point four million to fourteen organizations in FY23 and nine hundred and fifteen thousand to eleven organizations in FY24. This investment helped to either form or revitalize merchant associations in more than twenty neighborhoods, planting the seeds for future bid formation. We tackled storefront vacancies by lighting up commercial corridors, too. This year, SBS launched our first-of-its-kind Commercial District Lighting Grant with one point five million dollars awarded to seventeen organizations. This grant provides organizations with the money they need to design, produce, and install customized and creative community lighting projects, addressing neighborhood concerns of insufficient lighting, improving public safety, and attracting businesses and shoppers. These are some of the tools that we are currently using to reinvigorate our commercial corridors. But district investments must also be coupled with streamlining measures for entrepreneurs who want to open up new shops. That's why in the first days of his administration, Mayor Adams called on the city's enforcement agencies to review business regulations and identify rules holding our economy back. Through Small Business Forward and in partnership with the City Council, over ninety reforms have been implemented, saving small businesses millions in deferred fines and violations. Additionally, through SBS's NYC Business Express Service Team, or NYC Best, we provide new storefronts with one-on-one assistance to get permits and licenses needed to open faster. We also provide free consultations at their place of business and in multiple languages to educate businesses on regulations and ensure they are operating in compliance. This administration's City of Yes for Economic Opportunity will similarly do away with outdated zoning rules, preventing businesses from filling many vacant storefronts. It puts forward eighteen sensible policy changes that would expand options for businesses to locate closer to their customers, support growing industries and sectors, foster vibrant neighborhoods and commercial corridors, and provide businesses with simpler zoning rules for the twenty-first century. We look forward to working with the council and the Department of City Planning to see these reforms effectuated. SBS remains committed to ensuring that small businesses thrive in every commercial corridor. Our historic programming over the past two years has supported thousands of businesses, and we will continue working with this committee to make New York City the best place to open, operate, and grow a storefront business. Thank you so much, and we look forward to answering any questions you may have.
Thank you. Thank you so much for all the information, for all the numbers, all the data, and also thank you for all the work that you do for our small businesses and our business corridors. So we have many questions, but before that, I want to briefly acknowledge council members, and Majority Whip Solvina Brooks-Powers, who has joined us in person, Councilmember Eric Botcher as well, and also Councilmember Ang, who has joined us via Zoom. A few questions, general questions about storefronts and storefront vacancies. How many storefronts do we have in our city? How many of them are vacant? And also, how do they compare smaller storefronts versus the larger ones? If that's information that we have?
Yes, we do. In terms of the raw numbers, and according to our latest quarterly count, there's a hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine storefronts. What was the second part? I'm sorry, dude.
How many of them are vacant?
And in terms of vacancy, about sixteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-four.
Okay. And how long does the average storefront vacancy remain vacant? Are we talking about generally six months, a year?
We don't have that data, but we can continue to analyze it. But what we do know is that with the platform that we have to track storefront openings and vacancies every ninety days, we can see which storefronts open and which close.
Out of all the vacancies that we have, would you say they're generally larger storefronts or smaller businesses or equally split, roughly?
We haven't analyzed that data, but that's something that we can definitely look into.
How many jobs does the average storefront generate? Smaller storefronts versus the larger ones?
That's a great question, council members. So at SBS, we look at businesses with fewer than fifty employees, and like I said earlier, those businesses account for about a quarter of the city's overall workforce and almost half of the job growth in the last two years. In terms of your specific question about storefronts, we don't have that number specifically handy, but as you know, a storefront business is typically a business with at least a few workers.
Okay. Do we know how much the average storefront generates in taxes, more or less?
No, in taxes? We can get back to you on that data. I don't think we have that data.
We would consult with the Department of Finance for that.
Okay. On the number of vacant storefronts that you mentioned, I think you mentioned something like one hundred forty-four thousand versus sixteen thousand. How did we get that data? What are those numbers based on?
So we have a vendor that every quarterly, they canvass New York City throughout all the boroughs, and they document the number of storefronts on commercial corridors, and they also document the number of storefronts that are vacant.
And how accurate, or more specifically, how recent is the information that you provided? Do they go around every six months?
Every ninety days, they update the data.
Every three months. Can you give us a general summary of how vacancy rates compare for the last few years? Pre-pandemic vacancy rates, pandemic vacancy rates, and today's vacancy rates?
So, council member, what we are seeing with our new vendor is a declining vacancy rate over the last few quarters. However, because it is a new vendor, the data doesn't exactly match to how that data was being collected by the Department of Finance in previous years. So we can go into more depth on, you know, provide an additional analysis if you're interested in the long-term trends, but currently, we're working with, you know, every ninety days.
Okay. All right, so a few questions about the data collection, and I want to briefly recognize Councilmember Paladina, who has joined us. Yeah, let's continue talking about how this data is obtained. So SBS is subject to two major reporting requirements on storefront vacancies, including Local Law 152, which requires that SBS report on storefront businesses for a minimum of twenty community districts per year, and also Local Law 157 slash ninety-five, which requires that the property owners submit information related to their property. So how does SBS gather data to fulfill these reporting requirements per year? So I know you mentioned there's a vendor for one of these.
Yes, so for Local Law 152, we've been able to use this vendor to collect that information. And like we said, we get it every ninety days. So when we have to do the reporting for eleven, I'm sorry, Local Law 152, we're able to use the most accurate data that we had from their last canvassing. As it relates to Local Law 157, which is like self-reported data, that data is submitted to the Department of Finance, so we will defer to them to like their reporting habits, I mean, their reporting methods and numbers.
Okay, and for Local Law ninety-five, does SBS take any steps to make sure that property owners know of their duty to report about their property?
For Locals Law 157?
Local Law 157 slash ninety-five, as demanded, yeah.
So, council member, as Deputy Commissioner Brown stated, you know, we're really focused on Local Law 152, where we have the data through our Live NYC platform. That is involving canvassing across storefronts, where canvassers are walking, you know, the streets of New York and noting the storefronts, taking pictures, understanding what kind of businesses are in what corridors as well as vacancies. It does not currently involve engaging with property owners in that process.
Okay. And how does SBS use the data gathered for each of these local laws?
For Local Law 152, I mean, and just the data that we collect on storefront vacancy, it helps inform our program designs. It helps us identify where we see areas that we need to focus on, where there is high vacancies, and then, you know, engage in our community partners on the ground in those various areas about different strategies that they may be able to employ to, you know, address those vacancy levels in their districts.
Okay, and you mentioned that based on the systems that we currently have, there's no way of determining whether it's a long-term vacancy or short-term vacancy, based on what the information that we have currently?
I mean, we, since we started collecting this data, using this vendor, and know that is collected every ninety days, we can, we could start to track to see if a property was vacant more than a ninety days or if it continues to end up on that list, because like I said, every ninety days, they show us which storefronts had an opening and which ones closed, so we can, you know, start to analyze that data to see if there are any storefronts that are just continuously on that list.
Okay. A few questions about the Live XYZ data. So last year, all of you, SBS partnered with Live XYZ to create the Live NYC map, which lists active and vacant storefronts in the city. Why was this project implemented, and how much funding is going to this partnership?
So we implemented this project so we can just have a better count of, you know, what was happening along commercial corridors, and to really understand where vacancies was, the vacancy rate was high throughout the city. So it's been very helpful, once again, to inform how we do our program designs, where there's areas of target in the city that we need to focus on to provide additional support with all of the services that SBS provides. And the total amount for this is one point six million per year, and it, the last year's FY25 of funding.
Okay. And is this a partner, partnership that SBS plans to continue doing? Or plans to continue?
Yeah, we are certainly excited to continue the work in terms of understanding commercial corridors and vacancies, and that's also what we do in our Neighborhood 360 and Avenue NYC grant programs, which include a Community District Needs Assessment. That often involves working with the organization on the ground to actually walk through the commercial corridor and kind of do the same thing that we're doing with Live NYC, of actually documenting everything in the commercial district. So storefront vacancy is certainly, and data collection is certainly a long-term interest of our agency.
Okay. Now what feedback have you received from small businesses or other members of the public on whether they use the map, for what purposes they use the map, and whether it's been helpful?
Yeah, we know that a lot of our bid partners use the map. They've been able to create, you know, district profiles based on the information that is received from the map. And just to continue on what Tiaan said, we use it, you know, to supplement the work that we do on a localized level through our grant programs and working with any community-based organizations.
Okay. So I have some additional questions about vacancy rates and trends, but I'll pass it on for now to our Majority Whip, Solvina Brooks-Powers, who has some questions.
Thank you, Chair, and hello. It's good to see you guys. So according to the Department of Finance data, my council district, Council District Thirty-One, is seeing the highest storefront vacancy rate of all council districts in Queens. Do you all have a sense of why that may be the case? And how does SBS target any outreach it does to improve vacancy rates? And how does vacancy data guide SBS's efforts to improve vacancy in certain corridors?
Well, vacancy rates is very complex. The conditions or the factors that impact vacancies in community districts may vary. What we do is we do work with any local partner to understand, you know, some of the challenges that they may be seeing that may be contributing to the high vacancy rate. But just given the sort of nuance of the issue and the complexity of the issue, we work with our local partners to really understand what those challenges are, and then we see whatever resources, I mean, we, sorry, utilize whatever resources that we have at SBS, whether it's outreach or any of our grant programs to provide a more localized, you know, approach to it. We also think, in tandem with some of the strategies that we have been using with the City of Yes, it may remove some of the archaic zoning barriers that prevent some spaces from being able to be occupied. So we think in tandem with our strategies and the City of Yes that we may see a trend of those spaces, you know, potentially being occupied.
So how are you using the data in terms of how you're doing outreach specifically in District Thirty-One? Because again, along a lot of our merchant corridors, there are high vacancy rates. I think about Merrick Boulevard and Laurelton, like there's an entire block almost that's fully vacant. And so what is in the toolbox for SBS to be able to address that? Because it's a blight on the community, and it's unsafe there. There are times where we've had people squatting in there. We've had to call law enforcement to try and get them out because there are unsafe conditions as a result of that.
So, council member, really appreciate the question. And as you know, Commissioner Kim is so dedicated to outreach and he's been to every council district himself. We would love to, you know, take a tour of that specific area and engage the property owners to better understand what's going on. As Deputy Commissioner Brown said, there's a multi, you know, different tools that we can use at SBS. First and foremost, our business services, you know, our Mobi van, we bring it out into the commercial districts throughout New York City. And we've really focused on providing commercial lease assistance in those areas, where we can identify business owners who are interested in moving into districts and work with them to find beneficial lease terms that will actually help them open the storefront and stay operational for longer.
One, but what about the businesses that are like on the foreclosure list right now? Because there are a couple of those properties that if you look, they are on the foreclosure. Thankfully, we don't have a lien sale going on right now, but if, if we did, they would be at risk of being vulnerable to that as well. So, how can you engage a business when they're at that point already?
That's a great question. So, storefront vacancy is definitely about opening new storefronts, but it's also about keeping existing storefronts operating. Our commercial lease assistance program works with folks who are in the process of, you know, lease issues with free legal assistance. So, we can definitely work together to connect those business owners with that free pro bono legal assistance. The only thing I would say is that it's pre-litigation. So, if they are, you know, entering into some sort of litigation, that, that does stop us from working with them.
And a few different agencies are crucial to the city's efforts to improve vacancy rates. That includes the Department of Transportation, who can help ensure that sidewalks and streets encourage people to patronize local businesses. How does SBS coordinate with DOT to reduce vacancy rates, if at all?
It's a, it's a really great question and I'll let Calvin speak to that a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, we, we are in coordination with our other city agency partners around the public realm and how we can improve those conditions. Currently, any neighborhood that is doing a commercial district needs assessment, you know, they identify those challenges. And if they are related to other agencies where they fall under that agency's purview, we engage that agency around efforts to kind of address some of those challenges. So, it's really taking a localized approach to it, just really understanding what the problem is, where it falls under any of the agencies, whether it's DOT or Department of City Planning. And then, we engage our agency partners to kind of really help with any of our local partners to address those issues.
And I do want to take you up on the offer in terms of doing a tour. Obviously, I have a few different merchant corridors. I have Merrick Boulevard, I have Motta Avenue, which Commissioner Kim has come a few times to and I'm very thankful for. We also have Francis Lewis Boulevard, we have a merchant strip on Beach Channel that could use some support to really build it up. And also in Arvin by the Sea, where, you know, we have a little bit of ebbs and flows. Like, we have a vacant bank spot in Arvin by the Sea where Chase was in a long-term lease. And they have since removed all of their staff there. They're still in the lease, but we're trying to attract another bank there. So, if there's a way that SBS can play a role with that too, that would be helpful in terms of that type of tenant for that particular space. But if there are other agencies that we can invite to make it like a task force thing, I really would appreciate that.
And, and I also want to just mention that our grant program is open for Avenue NYC and Neighborhood Three-Sixty. So, if you know any local organizations that are doing commercial revitalization work, we encourage you to let them know that they should apply, because the first, you know, step is to really assess what is happening and giving those organizations the tools, so that over time, we know that vacancies, they have its ebbs and its flow, it goes up and down. But we want to empower those community groups to understand how to address those challenges on a longer term.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Just want to reiterate one of the points mentioned by our Majority Whip. Vacant storefronts could have a lot of negative consequences, not only graffiti issues, garbage dumping issues, but also, we've even seen in some parts of my district and in the Bronx in general, even leading, leading to squatting, other general public safety issues. And, you know, for, it, it could easily lead, one or two vacant storefronts could, it could easily have a horrible domino effect in an entire business corridor. So, really important that we give that issue a lot of priority and a lot of attention. So, a few questions about that, and then I'll pass it on to Councilmember Zhuang and then Paladino, who have questions, and then Botcher, Councilmember Botcher. What in your view are the key driving factors behind the long-term rise in vacancies that we've seen in our city? And I know it depends on the neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that's sort of the continuous theme that we have, that we know that vacancies is a very complex and very nuanced. Even in a study that DCP did back in twenty nineteen, where they covered twenty-four neighborhoods, they said that there wasn't no clear pattern to the vacancy or the rent rates. But what they did identify is that in some of those neighborhoods that had high vacancy is that it was restrictive zoning, land use requirements that prevented some of these areas from occupying their stores. Just consider one of the proposals that they have in the text amendment with the grandfather rule. Like, if a, if a place was vacant for more than two years, they are unable to occupy with that same use. But by removing that restrictions, now you're freeing up opportunities for these spaces to be occupied, where otherwise they wouldn't be able to under the current rules.
Okay, and when you see a drastic change in vacancy rates in a neighborhood, are there any automatic steps that SBS or any other agency takes to try to understand that drastic change in the commercial corridor?
Yes, we, we engage our local partners to see what they're seeing on the ground. And using the data that we now have with Live XYZ, we would, you know, keep our eye on those rates in those particular neighborhoods. We encourage our local partners to do very low-hanging efforts to, you know, address the public realm issues and the quality of life that comes with vacancies, like repurposing those spaces. TN mentioned in Brownsville, they did a haunted house in some, in the Meatpacking District. They did pop-up coffee shops and art installations. So, there's different, very low-hanging fruit interventions that our local partners can do to, you know, improve the quality of life and the appearance of those storefront vacancies. Just as you mentioned, it can have a ripple effect. So, if we're starting to see an uptick, we engage our community partners and just understand what those challenges are and give them some of the strategies that we have seen worked in other neighborhoods.
Okay, and based on the areas that you've analyzed, had conversations with small businesses and the stakeholders, areas with high vacancy rates, what are the top five reasons? I know it depends on the specific neighborhood, but what are top five reasons that continue to pop up when you're having these conversations?
Once again, I mean, I, it could be a number, it could be a landlord trying to hold out for the ideal rent. It could be their, where they're located, if they're not in a transit-rich area. They're, they're in an area that's not transit-rich. It could be the, the build-out of the space is not really reflective of the, the market and the type of spaces that are in need for cus, cus, commercial spaces. So, once again, it's really engage in a local partner, so that they can engage with the landlord and really understand what those challenges are.
Okay, and going back to the, the XYZ map and system, any ways that we can improve the system to make it more accurate, make it easier to use, or anything that we've thought about of different ways of improving it?
Council member, I mean, the feedback that you've given today about looking at long-term vacancies, we'll certainly take back to the vendor and think more about it. And happy to, you know, hear more from this committee about what you would like to see.
Okay, thank you. I'll pass it on to Councilmember Zhuang for some questions.
Thank you, Chair. On this map, I see there's a high vacancy rate in Sunset Park. Do you have any updated data for this one, for the DOF data snapshot? Because this is old data. Do you have new data?
So, that map, if I am correct, is from the Department of Finance. And our data is slightly different in terms of a different source and different sourcing process. But we're more than happy to provide some more district-specific data to you, and we can definitely have a meeting about that.
Okay, because in, according to the data you guys provide today, the Sunset Park area has a high vacancy rate, twenty percent. But in my district, in Sunset Park area, I see business everywhere. They have illegal street vendors everywhere. Is there anything you guys to help about those illegal vendors?
So, actually, you know, we do have a vacancy rate for your district. We're seeing it at about nine percent, so that's in comparison. And again, they're not exactly apples to apples. And that is lower than the borough-wide average and it's lower than the city-wide average. So, we are encouraged by that. In terms of street vendors, SBS, you know, we're really focused. We see street vendors as the city's smallest entrepreneurs. And we really want to focus on helping them become legal and finding creative opportunities to grow their business in legal ways that sometimes may help fill storefronts. So, we have a range of business services from financing and legal assistance that all New Yorkers are eligible for. And we can certainly engage with the vendors in your area and work with our enforcement partners if necessary.
Thank you, and also one more question. I, I have business corridor on Eighty-Sixth Street. And the city wants to put a homeless shelter there with one hundred fifty men with drug addiction. I get a lot of complaint from the business around there. Do you think that's going to affect the business there?
I, I don't think that that's something that we can speak to, but we can look a little bit more into it and understand what's going on in the, in the district.
Yeah, and also I'd like to see, because I get a lot of complaints saying that's going to affect that business. Anything SBS able to get involved and, and the support you guys are able to give those business owners?
We can certainly, you know, join you to meet with those business owners and see what services we provide match the challenges that they say that they're facing.
Like, what's the relationship? Do you guys work together in different subjects between SBS and the, the, what's that department called?
Homeless Services.
Homeless Service.
We do work together and we love working with all of our city agency partners. I don't think that we have looked specifically at this issue quite yet. And we can certainly engage with our city partners as well as the neighborhood partners on the ground. In general, with, you know, groups like the Department of Homeless Services or Social Services, we focus on helping folks who are in shelter, you know, gain employment across New York City through our Workforce One Centers.
I, I, for me, I think it's very important to help those people that are homeless, help them to get a regular job, get training, find a job. And also, if SBS is able to, I think it's a bridge connect between business and the homeless people, that will be very helpful for our city. We're really able to resolve the issue about homeless. That I'm looking to see more of the work you guys coordinate together work for our community. Thank you.
I appreciate that.
And I just want to mention, Councilwoman, we do currently have an Avenue NYC grant in your area. So, if there's any, you know, additional suggestions or recommendations you have, we can pass that on to the local group that is doing the work in that area to address any of the vacancies or commercial corridor challenges that you've identified.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the questions. A few more questions on that same issue. What tools does SBS have available to support an area facing long-term or high numbers of vacancies?
So, one of our, you know, most useful tools is our commercial district needs assessment. And this is where a local group does a, sort of an assessment of their commercial corridors. They look at the retail mix, they look at what is vacant, they look at, they survey the, the consumers to identify what sort of retail offerings they would like to see. And having that localized data, I think that is the most useful tool that any group or any district can have, because they are looking at over time how their commercial corridor is changing. And then, once again, as part of that grant program, we're trying to empower those groups to just understand how to address those challenges along their commercial corridor.
Okay, and based on all the systems that we currently have, any success stories that stand out? For example, vacancy rates going from ten percent to five percent due to the program that we implemented?
We haven't looked at how the vacancy rate has changed, but we do have good examples of in Sunset Park, where the Brooklyn Chinese Association was able to match entrepreneurs to vacant spaces in their district. QEDC will be doing a similar sort of corridor walk with potential entrepreneurs who can access those vacant spaces. And then, when we get those best practices, we like to share that among the network and with other partners, so that we see that these things work in other neighborhoods, that they may be able to be useful tools in communities that are experiencing high vacancy rates.
Okay, and what are some of the regulatory measures that mostly affect storefront vacancies? And also, do you see anything changing based on the many conversations we're having with the City of Yes proposals, also local law one-fifty-one of twenty-twenty-three? Do you see any of those new potential reforms affecting vacancy rates or trends?
I, I, just knowing what is being proposed by the Department of City Planning and the City of Yes, I think, once again, along with some of the strategies that SBS has, working with our local partners, employing some of our grant programs, I think in tandem, they would help open up opportunities that are currently not there. So, you know, hopefully, that would be, you know, opportunity to fill those spaces. Once again, you know, we know that there are growth areas, that things that are trending up, like juice bars and sports stores and coffee shops, these are things that are doing well. So, we are identifying those things that are doing well. And then, looking at the sectors that are not doing so well and seeing where we may be able to provide support, like, you know, toy stores or party supply stores. So, we're using that information that we're collecting from Live, information that we're getting from our local partners, to feed back into our program design, to see where we need to pivot. As part of our Avenue NYC and Neighborhood Three-Sixty grant, one of the program components is storefront improvements. So, we're trying to help our local partners, I, be vigilant and, and identify these challenges that they're having along their commercial corridors.
Chair, I would like to highlight that the Fordham Road Bid is currently working with a nonprofit to do temporary activations in three vacant storefronts in, in your district. So, I think it would be a great thing for us all to sit down together and think more about some local interventions.
Thank you, yep. Thank you for all the work you've done there. We, we love the Fordham Road Bid and we love the Fordham Road Business Corridor, the busiest corridor in the entire Bronx. Yep, so now I'll pass it on to Councilmember Paladino and then Councilmember Botcher.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair. As we know, storefront vacancies now have become somewhat rampant. Right now, in my, in my district, I have shopping centers that are just emptying out. I've been in touch with the owners of the shopping centers. They really are at a loss right now. But my biggest concern is the City of Yes and the economic end of it. When we talk about moving stores or people self-starting in their homes, actual businesses that could be in bricks and mortar. How is the City of Yes and this economic opportunity going to impact the already very large number of storefront vacancies that we do have?
I mean, from what we know from the City of Yes, there will be a limitation on those in-home uses. So, not every business will be able to be occupied within their home. But from SBS's point of view, we look at, that's like a pipeline, you know. Most bustling businesses started in their home. And working with those entrepreneurs, eventually, maybe they can, you know, take on those brick-and-mortar spaces as we help them, as we do as an agency, help businesses to grow and to operate. So, we feel like it's an opportunity to create this sort of pipeline from in-home businesses to brick-and-mortars. So, like I stated, there are going to be limitations to what those in-home uses are. And we just feel that this is another strategy that we can take to address vacancies by making sure that as those businesses grow, that there's a spaces that they can occupy.
Okay, you know, we also have a lot of mom-and-pop stores that have been struggling tremendously to keep their heads above water. We also have a, it's actually, it's known as Raindo by me. And he used to have four stores, one of which was on Long Island, three which were in Queens, two which were in my district. So, they are really one step away from closing due to this shoplifting crisis that we've got going on. We've got the largest stores, which is CVS, and our other stores like that, Walgreens. We go into a CVS by me on the corner of my off, the block of my office, which is on We go into a CVS by me on the corner of my off, the block of my office, which is on Francis Lewis Boulevard, and went in to buy a tube of toothpaste. It's of course locked up, as everything is now, but the, uh, the manager of the store will only keep one tube of toothpaste behind the panel with the lock. It's insanity. So how and, uh, do we attract, you know, attract people to go back to brick and mortar when they are so fearful of the shoplifting epidemic that's going on? I mean, we've got kids coming in in bicycles and just bike riding through a store and ransacking a store. And a lot of people think, think things like that don't happen in District Nineteen, but they do. And, uh, I wanna know what, what kinda, what can we do to help these people out?
Uh, this is such an important issue, and, uh, you know, this administration takes the retail theft, um, challenge very seriously, which is why the mayor has convened a Retail Theft Task Force, um, with local business owners, uh, law enforcement, national retailers, labor, all sorts of folks to share, you know, what's going on in their districts, what new ideas, what new technologies are being implemented. But Councilmembers, specific to your district and, and what might be able to help, I mean, SBS is able to, uh, help convene community partners and the NYPD through the Community Link Program, which addresses, you know, quality of life issues, public safety issues. Additionally, through our investments, um, in our Neighborhood Development Division, such as our Commercial District Lighting Grant, we help to actually pilot innovative, uh, Commercial District Lighting Programs that help, you know, bring more light into commercial districts. That obviously helps to improve quality of life, um, and make people feel safer, which is a huge part of, of addressing this.
I didn't realize I could go through, through SBA to do that. This is great, because I know several, uh, corridors that could really use the li- the lighting, because people stop going out, you know? Now it's spring, it's summer, it's gonna be light until eight, nine o'clock at night. People are out, they're bustling around.
Right.
But we're talking about literally half a year where people stay home after four o'clock, cause they don't wanna go out. So that's a good thing. Can the ma- can the ma- just have one more moment? Thank you. Um, here's something for you, too. It seems that illegal businesses such as smoke shops are thriving. These are cash businesses that are selling illegal products. What is a motivator for a limit, a legitimate business to open when there are so many unfair quality businesses, quantity, quantity of businesses opening? Here, in my district, I have, um, over thirty smoke shops, and I work with Anthony Miranda. We did busts on them, I mean, we, we really, we hit these places hard, uh, and yet, within four hours, they're open again, but they open under the guise of a convenience store. Because when you go in, it's, you know, ice cream and lollipops and, uh, bags of, uh, chips. What can you do on your end, knowing that these businesses are illegal? Can we do anything, uh, as far as when, uh, somebody comes to you with a convenience store, wants to open a convenience store? What kind of guidelines can we put in to try to restrict them selling the paraphernalia that they're selling and ultimately, under the desks and under the other place, you know, thousands and thousands of dollars of illegal contraband?
So again, this is a really important question, and so thank you for asking it. Um, at SBS, you know, we're really focused on helping legal businesses open.
I know ya.
And, uh, we also, you know, do tangentially, uh, touch this through our Cannabis NYC Initiative, which is focused on helping legal licensed cannabis shops open.
They're coming too now, I have two.
And, and that's good news.
I'll tell you, they're lovely. They came to see me first, everything was really done, you know, the right way, so I'm very happy about that.
That's really good to hear.
And they, their goal is to see these le- illegal shops closed down, but we, it's a round robin, I'm not gonna tie you up with that. Also, sidebar, uh, we reached out to you and we're going to arrange for a Business Resource Roundtable. And we're in the process of that, but we have to fill out the multiple of pages of paperwork. So I just thought I'd give you a chuckle at that. But thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it, and look forward to, we have a lot of work to do, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, thank you so much, Councilmember, uh, Palladino. And speaking about that general safety issue, um, you mentioned Walgreens, there's actually a Walgreens one minute away from where I live, that's actually closing down due to the issue of retail theft. And, you know, the other day I visited a CVS around the Allerton section of the Bronx, not only did they have the items locked, locked up, but also once they freed the items, they would bring it to the cashier due to the issue of retail theft. So, um, you know, I always tell myself, I hope this is something that doesn't become the norm. Um, and anytime I speak to a small business, that is literally the, the very first issue that they bring to us, so something that, um, I think all of us are giving attention, but I think it needs a little bit more attention than what we're giving it. Um, so on that issue, is there any type of help that we could potentially give to the small businesses on that issue? I know you mentioned the lighting program, any help that we could give directly to the businesses, potentially, for example, um, grants so they could cover security-related expenses? For, you know, whatever, security, cameras, plexiglass?
Yeah, so, sorry, absolutely, Councilmember. Um, so our approach here has been to really engage with the local precinct. They're able to give walkthroughs for all of these businesses to help them assess their, um, security needs, understand where they should be putting cameras, what other sorts of, uh, safety measures they should be taking. The Crime Prevention Team at the NYPD has also developed a protocol to work really closely with, um, Commercial District Leaders to ensure that, you know, there's a direct line of contact to the local precinct, to make sure that folks understand how the NYPD works, understand how to reach out to them. And that's really been our focus, is in developing those neighborhood relationships with local precincts. I do also wanna highlight, and I should've mentioned this, Councilmember Palladino, that the Queens DA has, okay. Yes, the Queens DA has a, a program which we find encouraging, again, looking at repeat offenders, looking at hotspots, and, um, through the Retail Theft Task Force convened by the mayor, he's convened all of the DAs on this issue, because it's certainly a cross, uh, government-needed approach. And the DAs have a, a big hand in it as well, and they are trying to work creatively. So Councilmember, maybe we could, you know, work with the Bronx DA together on this.
Yep, absolutely. And also, any trends that we've seen on that issue? Have we seen retail theft increase in the last two years? Or anything showing that, um, we might be moving the right direction on that issue? Or are the numbers still being analyzed?
Um, I would have to defer to the NYPD on this, um, but overall, we are encouraged that public safety numbers are, um, uh, you know, showing a safer streets and, uh, safer corridors.
Okay, and to what extent would you say retail theft plays a role on the issue of vacant storefronts? Would you say that's, uh, you know, one of the top five reasons for the going out of business problem that we're seeing in many communities?
Um, I would say it's certainly something that comes up when we talk to folks, but as Deputy Commissioner Brown says, each neighborhood is very different, and each one requires a tailored approach, and each store owner's experience is also very different. So that's why we're really focused on making sure there's like equitable access, um, to law enforcement officials and ensuring that relationships there are strong, so that people can ask for help when they need to. We don't want there to be any sort of stigma for, or, um, hesitancy in terms of asking, uh, for assistance from your local precinct.
Thank you, thank you so much. So now we'll hear from Councilmember Botcher and then, uh, from Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you, Chair. I would love to drill down a little bit more on Local One-Fifty-seven of two thousand nineteen. Local Law One-Fifty-seven of two thousand nineteen requires that at the start of each year, building owners with storefront and second-floor commercial space, as well as commercial spaces in residential buildings, are required to register with the City Department of Finance as part of their annual income and expense filings. The size, location, occupancy status, monthly rent, lease status, and owner contact information for each space. Can you give us an update on how, um, how that's working with all those, uh, data sets, particularly monthly rent and, and lease status? Is that information being reported by building owners?
So, uh, that is self-reported data, and, um, we would have to refer to DOF to speak on their reporting requirements, because that information goes directly to, um, DOF. Um, we manage the Local Law One-Fifty-two using the platform, so we have a sense of what the storefronts are, but that data on the first floor, second floor, and the sizes of the spaces, that information is sent to DOF.
The information is collected by Department of Finance, but as the Department of Small Business Services, you ostensibly receive that information, you analyze it, you publish it?
Um, we do get it, but we don't, uh, verify the, the legitimacy of, of that data. We rely on DOF and their reporting practices. Um, so, I mean, we have it, but we don't verify whether or not it's accurate or not.
And what's your opinion about the, the, the compliance with Local Law One-Fifty-seven as the agency that is, uh, concerned about small businesses? This data set, are you analyzing it? Is it complete? Can you give us an update on the data set?
I mean, I would just say, our opinion of it, any information that we get that can help us address any of the concerns that we have along commercial corridors, we welcome that information, whether it's complete or not complete. All of our, we, we use a, a variety of tools, so if it can supplement any of the information that we have, you know, we, we use what we can.
Do you, do you have the data, do you possess the data on monthly rents and lease status for storefronts and commercial spaces in New York City?
Um, if we do, it would be through our CDNAs, which are, um, Neighborhood Research Studies, basically, um, that we help to fund, uh, in partnership with community-based organizations. When they identify challenges such as retail vacancy, we support them in doing that, um, tailored, uh, review in their neighborhood, uh, which may include, uh, convening property owners and, and looking at data like that, um, through systems like Property Shark.
Yeah, and the most comprehensive data that we have is the one that we collect through One-Fifty-two, Local Law One-Fifty-two.
The, the hope was for the, the storefront tracker, as it was called, was that this would provide us with a, a automatic, regularly updated data set for storefront vacancies citywide, so we wouldn't have to necessarily rely on ad hoc walking surveys of neighborhoods. And we would get to, over time, see vacancies, uh, lease terms, uh, rents, and really get a handle on the problem. It, it sounds to me like Local Law One-Fifty-seven isn't, uh, fulfilling that promise, that it's, it sounds like an incomplete data set that provides some information, but it's not the tool for you that it could be as you seek to support small businesses in New York City.
Councilmember, I, I really appreciate your attention to this. So we have been looking at Local Law, uh, One-Fifty-two and working with Live XYZ through our Live NYC map, which does citywide, um, surveying and, and walking through corridors on a citywide basis every ninety days. So I do wanna, you know, establish that this is a citywide database, where it doesn't necessar- I, where I'm hearing, you know, your interest is in the second-floor, um, vacancies as well. This is really focused on ground floor level, and again, walking through storefront, um, sorry, through commercial districts, doing a visual canvassing. Um, and so certainly, there is more to do across all of our communities. We really do think that community-based partnerships are the key to that, because that also helps us surface solutions for challenges that are identified.
So Local Law One-Fifty-two seems to be working, in your opinion, with respect to helping to provide data about storefront vacancies citywide, whereas Local One-Fifty-seven, the self-reporting data through the Department of Finance, doesn't seem to be a primary tool for your agency at this time.
We're really focused on using the new tools that we have, um, which coincide with Local Law One-Fifty-two, um, but would definitely, you know, have to have a conversation with the Department of Finance at the table to understand better if there are any, you know, sort of improvements on that front.
I would just finally note that Local Law One-Fifty-seven says that owners who fail to register or provide, or who provide inaccurate information will face fines, and I think that would be a good follow-up to this, is to speak with the Department of Finance and get an update on their implementation of Local Law One-Fifty-seven, if it's even being implemented as, uh, the law requires. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, Councilmember Botcher. And now let's hear from Councilmember Gail Brewer.
And it was then Borough President Burroughs Law, Gail Brewer's Law. I didn't see you there.
Um, I, I do think it does need, uh, help, because many of the owners are not complying. So we have been in touch with finance about it, but it does need some assistance. I was next door, I'm sorry, so I didn't hear everything, but this is a topic that I've been working on for a very long time. What tools, I call it the Blaze Law, that's Blaze's Law, the one with the, um, making sure that there are, uh, there's a map. So I call Blaze's Law, they don't know Blaze, but you know Blaze, okay. So the question is, how are all of these databases, so to speak, helping you, whether it's Blaze's, it's One-Fifty-two, One-Fifty-seven, if it was fully implemented, um, helping you to identify what, where the vacancies are and what you're gonna do about them? They are creating havoc. They're creating havoc because there is, uh, homeless, garbage, um, the business next door is hurt, the police have to put extra time in, um, and the owners, as far as I know, don't get city, state, or federal tax write-offs, they may get some depreciation. Um, we've been talking about this for thirty years. And so my question is, do you have enough tools, and if you have the tools, what are you doing with them? Now, you can, can't force an owner to rent, right? I understand that. But you can have what I did, which is, we have on the Upper West Side, the law that if you are a, um, you can't come in with a big, uh, storefront on Amsterdam and Columbus, get the hell out, you're not allowed, forty feet is, you know, you can't have a storefront bigger than that unless you're grandfathered in, and banks anywhere can't have more than twenty-five feet. What that does is it helps when the big store comes in and then leaves, you don't have this big space. So is there some way maybe of cutting up some of these big spaces? We've lost a lot of Walgreens, a lot of CVSs, for whatever reasons, um, and they sit empty. So my question is, I guess, you know, a bigger question. I did pass, under Amanda Burden, I did pass legislation that c- cuts the size of the, that's a zoning, uh, discussion. It's made a huge difference. You don't see many vacancies when you have to have a small store. So, um, this vacancy issue, I thought it would end sort of once the pandemic ended, it has not. It has continued to be a problem. So I guess that my question, with all these different tools, um, what are we doing to be able to address? Others would like to have a mandated art program in the space. When those spaces are empty, there's no lighting at night, there's, uh, people creating havoc outside that space. People are sleeping outside that space, I understand that, but it's because it's vacant. So what can we do with all of this data?
Yes, ve- very good question, um, Councilmembers. So as stated, um, with Local Law One-Fifty-two, we do collect the number of vacancies, um, every ninety days or quarterly, so we have count of which openings happen citywide, at the borough level, council, district level, and then where the closings are. We use that information, one, to understand where the vacancies are high, and then we use the tools that we have, like grants. Uh, it was mentioned that we, um, launched a Commercial District Lighting Grant, so those areas that were, you know, the perception of safety, making sure that those areas had an opportunity to i- uh, increase their level of lighting, um, and increase the, um, the level of, of safety, but we also have other tools, like our grant programs, the CDNA.
They don't want grants, they want loans.
They don't want grants, they want loans?
Oh, I'm sorry, they want grants, I'm sorry, they don't want loans.
So this is-
But they don't even, grants, I'm just saying, at least in Manhattan, it doesn't make a huge, you gotta- huge, you got to rent, you got to rent it.
Yeah, these are, these are grant programs that, yeah, these are grant programs that we offer. And part of it too, I think I stated it earlier, is that we want to help build the capacity of that local group so that we're giving them the tools to identify those challenges along their commercial corridors. Any grantee that works with us, we expose them to the other resources that SBS has, like our New York Best team, our compliance advisors, so they can be out there on the corridor. So it's about using multiple approaches to address this, whether it's our lighting grant, tracking the vacancies, and then working with our local partners.
Okay. Does the 152 data go into Blaze's database, or are they separate?
Well, it's our database, it's the Live NYC map.
Well, I know, but I'm calling Blaze's. But does it go into that, 152 goes into that database? That's the database that 152 creates, is that what you're saying?
Yes, and we'll be able to have a more accurate account of what's happening every quarter.
Okay. I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, it's my impression that the vacancies are not going down, they seem to be increasing, particularly of larger businesses, and at least in Manhattan, where rents are high and the stakes are high, all of these grants are not going to make a big difference. So I guess what I'm saying is, you need a louder voice about people renting and not having them stay vacant for months and months and months. Somebody to say something, because obviously, it's, we don't know what the advantage is to the owner. The owner tells me there's no advantage, but he or she is waiting for the larger, I hate to say, chain store, or somebody to come in. They mostly want chain stores. And of course, I don't want chain stores, I want the local flavor. But so there's a, there's a, people are very attached to their local stores, and this is a quality of life issue. And so I think, you know, maybe we should have taxing, this will be a state issue, on vacancies. In other words, if you're a vacant store, tax it. That might be something, I know you don't want to suggest taxing, I understand that, but they will keep them vacant for a very long time unless there's some instrument that says this is no longer an option for you. So you do need to think a little bit more, in my opinion, holistically about this issue. It is contributing to the vacant, to the crime issues. And so I would love to see more discussion, then with all due respect, a lighting program. We don't need lights in Manhattan, we got plenty of lights. We need them to be filled, we need them to be filled, that's what we need.
Yeah, no, we definitely understand what you're saying and a very good point. Even though it may not seem that way, I think it's a slow and steady downtrend that we've have been observing in terms of the vacancy, so we're going to try to, you know, capitalize off of that momentum and make sure that we-
But what numbers do you see this year versus last year? Did you give those numbers earlier in terms of the vacancies?
So the current vacancy rate is 11.3.
Citywide?
Yes, citywide.
And what was it last year? At least 22 versus 23, whatever you want.
The earliest comparison we have is quarter three of 2023, it was 11.6, and then today, 11.3 citywide. Similarly, in Manhattan, although, Councilmember, you're pointing out, I mean, Manhattan is seeing this issue more than the other boroughs.
Much more.
On the same timeframe, from quarter three 2023, we see 15.7 decreasing by seven basis points to 15.0 today.
Yeah, I do think that we have, you need a big, the other thing is just finally, I'll say, you could have some art programs in the vacancies and make them more mandated, not if you'd like to, but I mean, that issue is, something has to be happening in that space. And whether it's Shoshama or some other organization to be part of the way in which you deal with vacancies. I have not heard you talk about that. Do you have an opinion on that?
We love community art, and we do want to highlight one specific, a couple specific examples of how we've been working with the community groups to do this, and Councilmember Botcher's district, with the Meatpacking District bid, they transformed eight storefronts-
Jeffrey does everything, so take him out of the equation, go ahead.
Into theater performance spaces, so I mean, just to highlight that, the Downtown Alliance is also working on activating vacant storefronts to help promote the holiday season. And we also piloted a program called Building Creative Capacity last year, outside of Manhattan and Queens, with the Asian American Foundation, and they funded murals and other sorts of artist activations in those neighborhoods.
But I'm just, maybe some of your grants could go toward that. I do the same thing, Art for Art on the Avenue, Shoshama, I got it, but it's still a big problem, so I'll leave it at that.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, Councilmember Brewer, and thank you for all the work you've done on the different local laws that we're talking about today. A few more questions on that issue. So obviously, every commercial corridor is different. In some commercial corridors, the vacant storefront problem is so severe that it makes it almost impossible for any business to want to come there. Just imagine opening up, or trying to open up a business in a block with four other vacant storefronts. Just imagine how the foot traffic is in that community and also quality of life issues in that community could make it almost impossible for any business to want to come there. So I don't know if Councilmember Brewer indirectly answered this question, but any grant available to encourage businesses to come to neighborhoods that have some type of storefront, vacant storefront emergency?
Well, I mean, our grants work with local community partners, and in part of our grant programs, we do have a storefront improvement component. So once they've done this assessment of their corridor, vacancies is one of their top challenges, we provide them with best practices and tools so that they can engage with those landlord, landlords to try to activate those spaces. Some of them are, you know, what was mentioned by Councilmember, like repurposing those spaces or doing pop-ups in those spaces, just to kind of minimize the impact that is having on the quality of life.
Okay, well, I guess in the future, I hope we could continue talking about potential grants that we could work on, just to help businesses that want to invest in areas that we could even call risky due to the high amount of vacant storefronts. I mean, again, just imagine trying, thinking about opening up a restaurant in an area with high vacancy rates, and also quality of life issues in the community, right? Nobody would want to come to that restaurant. It'll be very difficult for any small business owner to say, this is going to be the community where I'm going to invest my time and energy. So yeah, I look forward to continuing that conversation. And I'll pass it on to Councilmember Palladino for a second round of questions.
Thank you. Two things. Gail brought up a very good point about fining, because I just talked about how some of my shopping centers, now they're privately owned, and I know for a fact that one of my owners, because it took him two years before he would even talk to me on the phone, he is deliberately letting these storefronts go vacant. It's an eyesaw. Is there any sort of fines? You know, when Councilmember Brewer brought that up, I thought that was a really good idea. Is there any way, this is privately owned, that he could face a financial consequence to the fact that he is deliberately, deliberately not filling his stores? He's owned this shopping center since 1957. He owns 50-something-other ones along with this one. This is a hub, this is where I grew up. It was a go-to for people who lived in my community, a part of my district known as Whitestone. And yet, this has become not a nice place to be. So I was just wondering, that makes a lot, I thought that makes, you know, I hate penalizing people with fines, but if it's the only thing that's really going to shake them up, and there's some sort of consequence, only then are we going to see something really happen here. You know, we're talking about, we can't sugarcoat the fact that there's rampant crime in the city, which is preventing people from opening small businesses in what was once good areas to go to. You know, you, my chairman here has brought up a very good point. You had a row of very nice stores at one time, and now they're empty. They're empty since COVID, most of them, right? Pre-COVID, post-COVID, they never could rent again. You got one guy who wants to go in and put in a really nice restaurant, something small, something cute, and he's afraid, or she's afraid, to do that. Because there, while our DA in Queens is doing her best with the passport situation, and we work very closely with our precincts, we all know there's not enough cops to do the job. We know that their security people that are standing guard cannot stop what's happening. So let me go back, I diverted, I'm sorry, let me go back to these large box stores, as Councilmember Brewer broke up, brought up. We have it also, a, what once was a very large Walbound's, they broke it into a CVS and now North Shore Farms. And they're being ransacked, that CVS, and they're facing closure. So I guess if we come back to empty storefronts, stay on the topic, Vic, empty storefronts, and what kind of, what can we do? And let me go back again to the city of yes, I realize what you're saying as it being a pipeline. I'm going to tell you right now, if someone is allowed to make a barber shop in their garage, not going to happen?
Not allowed.
That's going to come under a code?
As the amendment is stated now, you cannot have a barber shop in your home.
Well, if the city of yes passes-
You will not be able to have a barber shop in your home.
And yet, we just had an economic city of yes conference, I think it was last week, a meeting, where they did say specifically, the person who was speaking on behalf of city of yes, said specifically nail salons, barber shops, are going to be allowed to open in homes.
Oh, sorry, I misspoke, I read the text and I didn't see barber shops as one of the examples.
Well, you take, don't worry about it, I'm not holding your hands over the fire for that.
But going back to your example about the big box store, unfortunately, SBS is not an enforcement agency, but if there's dumping that's happening at that mall that's impacting the quality of life, we can contact DSNY because they are the enforcement agency for-
Right, we've done that through my office.
And then we can, you know, we talked a lot about the coordination with one, Local Law 157, this is a conversation that we can definitely engage our agency partners at DOF, just to kind of really analyze the data that they're having, but we're not an enforcement agency, so we couldn't levy any fines.
I know, and I don't mean to lay that at your feet, I understand that. I'm just thinking of different ways, and again, to Brewer's point, it was the smaller stores. These smaller stores that are going to become home businesses, these are businesses that are supposed to be going into bricks and mortar. I am against the city of yes economically, I'm against the city of yes housing, I'm against it, period. I want people out of their pajamas, I want them in office buildings again. I know it's, it sounds somewhat antiquated, as people have used that word quite a bit, it's not antiquated. It's called bring business back to New York City in our five boroughs. We need people to feel safe to open up a business, we need people to feel secure financially with the help of small businesses, we know all the ways to go about it. We need the people to get the gumption to come back, and the more we keep telling people they could stay home, we are just going to see it homeless, we're going to see it just go exactly the opposite way of what we want. We want our city back, we want it back economically, we want it back mentally and physically, don't you? You want the heartbeat back, don't you? Right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, thank you so much, Councilmember Palladino. A few more questions before we conclude. On the issue of vacant storefronts, of course, sometimes we have landlords who are, you know, with good reason, taking their time looking for a good tenant, a tenant that will bring good business to the corridor, you know, bring good jobs, bring good foot traffic, rather than, you know, rushing to rent and potentially renting to, for example, smoke shop, as we've seen in many areas. And of course, we don't want to harm those property owners, we want to be helping them to bring a business to their property, but at the same time, we do have landlords and property owners that are, as my colleagues mentioned, literally just warehousing their properties. So just, so just curious, is there anything within our power that we can do to push that specific group of landlords? I know the commercial vacancy, that's more of a state issue, but anything that, any tools that we have within our power as a city to, I guess, push landlords to start looking for tenants?
I mean, hopefully, we can encourage them to open up those spaces with the city of yes and some of the additional opportunities that they will be able to, you know, put in those spaces, like life sciences spaces or maker spaces that will be allowed to be in commercial districts where currently they're not allowed to be. These are clean production spaces, they have to adhere to all of the environment review stuff, so they can be adjacent to those other commercial uses. So with these additional uses, maybe there's an opportunity for them to envision a different use for those spaces that they're leaving vacant.
And I would add on top of that, I think continued engagement on this topic is just so important. In our testimony, we highlighted the Central Astoria LDC, which is doing a walk and tour with the Queens Economic Development Corporation, really working to engage the landlords and property owners and bring them in on the shared community vision, right? Help them understand the impact that it's having in the community, make them feel responsible as a stakeholder for it. And so, you know, that's the type of work that we hope to be able to continue and will continue through our NDD work.
Thank you. And also, on that issue, what are ways that the city of yes would encourage property owners to rent? So you mentioned something about users, could you elaborate on that?
So as part of the city of yes, there are amendments that would want to remove the grandfather law, so if a space was vacant for more than two years, they couldn't put a non-compliance use in it if it was a commercial use, but now they will be able to do that. Opening up other opportunities in commercial districts for maker spaces, these are like bakery, pottery places, they will now be able to be in commercial districts where previously, I mean, currently, under the rule, they wouldn't be able to. And then re-envisioning like amusement stuff, like arcades, comedy shows, things that will help with the nightlife, these were land uses that were, that wasn't envisioned when the current zoning was put into place, so they're revising the zoning amendment to make sure that these are additional opportunities that can, that landlords can utilize for activating those spaces.
Got it, okay. And final question, so about 20 years ago, our vacancy rates were at about 4% back in 2007, 4%. Today, the number has nearly tripled, it's at about 11.2 or 11.3. Is there any city, state, or federal regulation or laws that we could pass that you think would drastically change the numbers back to what they were? City of yes, I'm sure is one of them, anything else that we've thought about?
City of yes will underscore again, but we are actually in the process of convening SBSs from cities all over the country to talk about the shared, you know, challenges that all cities are facing, from commercial vacancy to retail theft. And so we're hoping that as part of that conversation, we'll be able to surface new ideas.
Thank you, thank you so much. Does anyone else have any other questions? All right, well, thank you so much for joining today, really appreciate all the work that you do on the issue of supporting our small businesses and reactivating vacant storefronts. There's a few pieces of legislation that I'm currently working on, I look forward to chatting with all of you about, related to this issue, including one that would give grants for businesses that want to invest in areas with severe vacancy rates, and another one that would waive permits, construction, DOB-related permits, which are very costly, to businesses that want to come specifically to areas that have high vacancy rates, just to make sure that we're encouraging people to look into these communities and hopefully rent there and bring good foot traffic and life to these communities. But thank you so much, and we look forward to continuing our work. But yeah, thank you for joining today and also for all the information.
Thank you.
Thank you, the panel is now excused. Thank you, the panel is now excused. Thank you so much, I'd like to recognize council member Shaker Krishan, who has joined us. Uh, we will now turn to public testimony. I'd like to remind everyone that I'll call individuals by name to testify. Please begin once the sergeant has started the timer. I will open it up for any council members' questions after all the panelists have completed their testimony. I remind all members of the public that this is a government proceeding and the quorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may now present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the sergeant-at-arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with sergeant-at-arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have two minutes to speak at today's oversight hearing topic, vital corridors, storefront vacancy rates and trends. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit to the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the sergeant-at-arms. And now we would like to call up, uh, Taylor James, uh, for your testimony. Oh, actually, I'll call Taylor James and then Matt Bauer and then Christopher Leon Johnson. All of you could join us at the table and we'll have, uh, Taylor testify first. All right, you may begin when ready.
Thank you for this opportunity to comment on the storefront vacancies. My name is Taylor James and I'm a staff attorney with the Legal Aid Society's Community Development Project. A unit that addresses some of the most urgent problems facing New York City's small businesses, including the threat of displacement. We work with grassroots organizations to help make sure that people of color, immigrants and other low-income residents that have helped in building our city are not displaced. Through our representation of commercial tenants, meeting with commu- community organizers and supporting small businesses, unrelated rents continue to be a common concern when discussing commercial displacement. For entrepreneurs displaced by excessive rent increases, finding a new brick and mortar location for their business venture is a huge challenge. We routinely, routinely hear from commercial tenants that are at risk of displacement. It is important to note that these mom and pop businesses have the most profound effect on the character and social fabric of the neighborhoods experiencing this phenomenon. For example, our client, a Washington Heights restaurant owner of 40 years, was given an eviction notice along with seven other Latinx-owned businesses. The business owners were each given the option of paying a higher rent and for the restaurant, it essentially doubled the current rate, 5,000 a month. Our client could not afford that option since there was no law preventing a landlord from doubling the rent, a long-term tenant has no protection to ensure stability. In this, in the process, much is lost and an eviction meant our client was not only losing their restaurant, but their life savings. Black and brown-owned businesses in gentrifying areas are still at risk of displacement due to the cost of rent and storefront vacancies. When they cannot afford to renew or enter into a lease, these neighborhoods transform physically and culturally. The Legal Aid Society recommends when addressing storefront vacancies, SBS should address landlords' unregulated ability to increase rent and hold storefronts vacant. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. And now we'll hear from Matt Bauer from the New York City Bid Association.
And I am testifying on behalf of the New York City Bid Association, which represents all 76 of the city's business improvement districts. Bids annually invest $145 million in private assessment funds to create the foundation necessary for retail corridors to thrive. On a daily basis, bids are front, frontline workers dedicated to combating commercial vacancies in our neighborhoods, but providing a clean and safe shopping environment with our supplemental security and sanitation programs. Our streetscape improvements, including plantings and street furniture, provide ongoing and highly visible stewardship in our areas. Our marketing, special event and publicity programs help build the customer bases of our member businesses, all with the direct purpose of helping our members' cash registers ring. Moreover, our work with looks, with social service agencies, uh, and city, and city agencies, uh, aid the many in need who are part of our communities. We deeply appreciate the guidance, camaraderie and meaningful support provided by the wonderful team at SBS. Their neighborhood development staff are here with us every step of the way, and we constantly utilize their business support staff to aid our businesses in navigating licenses, permits and understanding city regulations. Our bids appreciate the positive steps that have already been taken by city government to better understand and address the concerns of brick and mortar businesses, including creating the vacancy database, the one-stop-shop NYC Business Portal, Portal EO2, which curbs burdens and fines, and creation of the Small Business Advisory Commission and the Mayor's Retail Theft Task Force, both of which I have the honor of serving on. We are pleased that many of our commercial corridors, both in the CBD and throughout the boroughs, are filling up again post-pandemic with pedestrian numbers and sales figures rising. We want to continue these positive trends while addressing persistent vacancies in some corridors. Factors contributing to retail vacancy can vary upon the neighborhood. For example, some corridors may depend upon office workers to be back in force, while others may be deeply affected by changes in transportation or ongoing infrastructure projects. And quality adaptability of older building stock and growth, competing commercial destinations, sap away from interest in other commercial retailer corridors, uh, at the expense and, the expense of providing venting, backflow protectors and creating gas connections. To convert retail to food-related use are also frequently cited issues. Uh, we just want to say again how important it is to keep our corridors safe and, uh, we, and the issues of unlicensed cannabis shops in our neighborhoods that affecting things, businesses don't want to be near them. And we just want to just conclude by saying thanks to the many council members that serve on our boards, because they're in our districts, and we just appreciate all that you do to support, uh, businesses in our communities, thanks so much.
Thank you, thank you Matt for your testimony and also for all the work you do in Madison Avenue. A quick question for both of you, um, what are some of the issues that you've seen lead to a commercial vacancy in the area that, in the commercial district that you work in? I know you mentioned regulations, what are some of those regulations? Also, what else have we seen lead to those commercial vacancies?
Well, I mean, the, the biggest issue, of course, is just maintaining strength of the relationship with their clients and, and creating products that, and services that people want, which has always been an issue, you know, the competition among the brands. But really, retail theft has been a big issue in our neighborhood. Uh, I should tell you, five years ago, if I got a call from a reporter and asked me, you know, what, what theft was like, and I said, oh, it's like, it's in every, like in every neighborhood around the country. And then, you know, three years ago, we said, you know, actually, it really is an issue, we really do have to address it. So, you know, that's, you know, the, and the efforts by placing additional police officers in our neighborhood really has helped. And that really has made a difference in more outreach with the police department in terms of creating, um, the window film that goes on stories, which I think, you know, your, your legislation that would actually provide, uh, grants to small businesses really would be very, very helpful in providing that. And actually, we've worked a lot with our neighborhood crime prevention officers, uh, in, uh, getting, making sure that the services that they're getting in the stores for additional security really help, and that would be really helpful in your particular grant, I think we could work very much with you and the NCOs.
Okay.
Um, on my end, I'm seeing like business owners that are near a vacant premises and that affects their foot track, traffic. Recently, a juice bar called me this week and had that issue. In addition to that, I think that if there was more funding for legal services, for lease negotiations, we'd be able to put things in the lease, like good guy clauses and things to protect people, um, when they have issues with their lease. Um, and like, as you know, like, another issue is that a lot of times it's a money issue for small businesses, and it would be very helpful to have more opportunities for grants as opposed to only loans.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much for your testimony and for all the information.
Thank you.
I look forward to working together on all those issues.
Thank you.
Thank you, the panel is now excused. Is there, is there anyone in the room who would like to testify in person before we move on to the Zoom testimony? All right, so we'll move on to the Zoom panelists. We're joined by, uh, four panelists, Marshall Strawbridge, Jessica Walker, Kevin Alexander and Pedro Suarez. Um, so we'll start in that order, we'll start with, uh, Marshall Strawbridge, uh, you can start whenever you're ready.
You may begin.
All right, seems like Marshall, uh, dropped off, so we'll, we'll move on to Jessica Walker from the Manhattan Chamber of Commerce.
I, uh, and thank you so much for having me and for doing this, this important hearing. I am Jessica Walker, the president of the Manhattan Chamber of Commerce, we are a business organization representing businesses of all sizes. Um, I'll try to be brief here, in February, we held a summit, um, all about what was happening with Manhattan storefronts. And in terms of the major storefront industries, what our experts told us is that restaurants are rebounding, tourism continues to grow, but retail employment is really where, um, things are flat, and that really is the target here. In terms of the elevated vacancy rates in Manhattan, uh, a few things. One, the impact of illegal weed shops is masking the vac- the vacancy levels, um, we think that it's actually much higher, and we do support the closure of these illegal shops, but, um, when that does happen, we're going to see, um, even more vacancy, obviously. Um, this is all happening, the vacancies in Manhattan is happening for two major reasons. One, reduced demand, um, obviously businesses need customer, customers, and, um, that for retail is because of the move to e-commerce and also the move, uh, to remote work, especially in Manhattan. Um, the other major reason which has come up today is retail theft, happy to talk more about that. In terms of solutions, some of the things that we, uh, want to point out, one, um, our chamber, along with the other borough-wide chambers, has been running a program called Small Business Resource Network, um, since, uh, October 2020. It has done door-to-door outreach, mostly to storefront businesses, um, and it's a great program, we're seeking a restoration of funding in the city budget. Um, two, the, uh, our chamber is now launching a retail storefront accelerator, um, because we're seeing a surge of entrepreneurship. The goal here is to try to take those successful e-commerce businesses and help them open a successful brick and mortar shop in, uh, Manhattan. Applications are open now, happy to talk more about that. And then the final, uh, recommendation is around ways to increase foot traffic and demand, especially, um, because we're starting to see our tourism come back in terms of people, um, from other states and other countries. We really think we want to focus on local and regional residents. Um, and so there are certain things, we support casinos, we support, um, major art installations like The Gates, which was very successful. Um, happy to answer any questions.
Thank, thank you, thank you so much for your testimony. And thank you for all the work that you do. Thank you, we don't have any questions, we'll move on to the next, uh, panelist, uh, Pedro Suarez from the Third Avenue Bid.
You may begin.
Thank you Chair Felice and members of the Small Business Committee, I am Pedro Suarez, Executive Director of the Hub Third Avenue Business Improvement District in the Bo- in the Bronx. The business mission is to keep one of New York City's most trafficked commercial districts clean, safe, attractive and well-programmed for businesses. Our current storefront vacancy rate is currently estimated at 15.89% as of the end of 2023, based on live XYZ, Z data, which is the vendor that, um, SBS alluded to earlier. This is a 4% increase from data collected in 2020. Factors contributing to vacancy rates include lasting impacts of the COVID pandemic on business owners, rent increases, the financial impact of theft and perceived public safety and online competition. This is not an exhaustive analysis, as the bid recently launched its 2024 community survey and hopes to launch a more in-depth, in-depth Commercial District Needs Assessment in the coming year. As mentioned, the SBS, uh, is partnering with other city agencies and has taken many steps over the years to support bids and small businesses across the city. But some steps that the city can take to reduce vacancy rates include continued focus on access to capital for new and existing businesses, a greater investment in public safety and crime prevention in commercial districts, a greater investment in technical assistance for small businesses around online marketing. I look forward to continuing partnering with the city to support the hub and small businesses in the South Bronx, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much for your testimony and also thank you for all the work that you do, uh, for the people and also businesses in Third Avenue. I actually used to work in Third Avenue when I was a tenant lawyer at Legal Services. Um, yeah, so all of you are doing a great job, it's a very vibrant commercial corridor in the Bronx. A quick question, what are the top issues that you've heard on the ground, uh, that are leading to the commercial vacancies that we continue to see?
I mean, theft, as mentioned, um, by, by my colleague on the call, is a huge one. Um, I can tell you, you know, I was just talking to a local business, uh, last week, uh, a tenant who sells educational, um, uh, uh, supplies, uh, for local teachers and, and educators. You know, there, there's things being stolen from CVS just down the block that are being sold by unlicensed, um, uh, illegal vendors on the street. Um, it's that blatant, um, in terms of the theft that's happening. Burlington Coat Factory, um, has had to, uh, uh, you know, uh, hire off-duty police officers, which is very expensive. Most businesses in the corner, corridor, particularly small mom and pop shops can't afford to hire off-duty police officers. Um, and so secure, there is a need for additional security, security cameras and general crime prevention. But a lot of that is also a reflection of, um, poverty rates, uh, folks struggling with mental, mental health as well as drug addiction, um, that, that are robbing a lot of these stores. As you know, the Third Avenue Business Improvement District is at the center of the opioid pan- uh, epidemic in the city. And so if that issue is not addressed, you're going to continue to see high rates of, of theft, um, and, and, um, and mental, uh, mental issues, um, of, of, of folks in, in the district, which is contributing to that. So I would say theft has been a huge one, we lost Walgreens, uh, I want to say a few years ago is my understanding, due to the theft issue as well. And that continues to be a huge issue, um, that, uh, local business owners have flagged in the area. Um, and so safety, you know, is going to deter people from coming to the district, and so we really need to address that. We're working very closely with the precinct and have applied for additional funding, um, to, to, uh, to implement more public safety initiatives in the corridor. But again, um, the underlying issues need to be addressed in terms of drug addiction, poverty rates, um, which, which, which are at a record rate right now, uh, in the Third Avenue area.
Thank you, thank you so much, thank you again for your testimony and for all the work you do for the people and businesses in Third Avenue in the Bronx. Thank you. So we have, uh, two other Zoom panelists who joined but then dropped off, I'll call them again just in case they were able to join again. Uh, so Marshall Strawbridge from the Bronx Economic Development Corporation. All right, we'll move on to the next, Cat, Kevin Alexander, uh, from the Rockaway Development and Revitalization Corp. All right, so we don't have any other panelists. So just want to thank everybody who testified today, everyone from the administration, uh, the public as well, and thank you Rebecca Burilla and Jessica Boule for all the help in putting this, uh, hearing together. This hearing is hereby adjourned.